This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Public Board of Education for Tuesday, May 13th. This is both a business meeting and a budget hearing. This meeting is called to order. We will begin, thankfully tonight, with two of our favorite things, which is our Brighton Believers Awards and then our headlines and heroes. So I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan to get us started, please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. As we have done often and will continue to do, we're very excited to recognize members of our school community that have done such an outstanding job demonstrating the Brighton believes, character traits of respect, responsibility, integrity, kindness, and self-control. These individuals were nominated by members of our community and approved by the Brighton Believes Council. Award winners, our students, teachers, staff members, parents, coaches, community members, please go to bcst.org/believers and nominate somebody today who has done something wonderful in our community. I'd like to first call up members of the Brighton High School International Club, Asian Student Union, and district videographer Eric Gruner, if they could come on up. And if Jen Wheeler is here, she could come. Nope, everybody else come on up. Dr. Hall, please. This group of wonderful individuals were nominated by BHS teacher Jen Wheeler. She wrote, "Our Asian Student Union and International Club members helped to organize our school district's very first celebration of the Lunar New Year. Students helped to develop homeroom activities in order to share cultural background and history of the holiday. Students also worked collaboratively to produce a script and short film explaining the meaning behind a holiday celebrated by more than one billion people on the planet. Students from both student-run clubs helped to construct this year's Chinese Zodiac symbol in the form of a 25-foot snake sculpture that adorned our high school's main foyer. All students modeled the values of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control throughout the script-writing, sculpture-building, video-compiling, and homeroom-planning processes." I cannot think of a more worthy candidate. "All students helped in the spirit of altruistic pluralism in order to create a school-wide, student-centered project which endeavored to celebrate diversity in an increasingly polarized world. Students, whether they realize it or not, helped our entire student body and staff to learn collectively about a holiday that is celebrated not only in other regions of the world, but also in the United States. Recently, a Taiwanese parent commented about how warm and welcoming it was to walk into BHS and to see her heritage celebrated." The student-created video would not have been accomplished without the magic that is Eric Gruner. This video was then further shared with younger students throughout our school district by E&amp;L teachers so as to teach students and staff in other buildings about the holiday. Congratulations and thank you very much. If I could ask each of you to come on up, introduce yourselves to the board, and then I'll hand you a certificate. We'll take a picture. Come on right up to the microphone.
My name is Charles. I'm a sophomore at Brighton High School.
I'm Oscar Livman. I'm a senior at Brighton High School.
My name is Haiti Poe and I'm a junior at Brighton High School.
My name is Emily Moy and I'm a junior in Brighton High School.
And that's Dr. Hall. He's the principal who can't help me right now find the right certificate. So, hello, is that the one that's there? Yes, that'd be great, Dr. Hall. Appreciate you. Oscar? If you could just sign right here, because... We're gonna sign right here. Will they tell you all about that? Okay. Great job again. Thank you. Matteo Carosi, please come on up if you could. Contact him as well. Carosi, not Carosi, I'm sorry. Matteo Carosi, thank you very much. A TCMS student. Danielle Hipper, Chris Coyle, Christine Coyle, could you come on up along with Dr. Edmonds? I know you're here too. Matteo was nominated by teachers Danielle Hipper and Christine Coyle. They wrote, "We are honored to nominate Matteo for the Brighton Believes Award. Matteo consistently demonstrates integrity in all of his endeavors. He is a student who takes responsibility for his work and is committed to doing the right thing, even when no one is watching. Whether working on class assignments or collaborating with his peers, Matteo's honesty and strong ethical foundation are always evident. Respect is another cornerstone of Matteo's character. He treats everyone with kindness, whether it's his fellow students, teachers, or staff members. He has a natural ability to make others feel comfortable and valued, ensuring that his peers feel respected and safe in any environment. His interactions with others reflect his deep empathy and consideration for those around him. What truly sets Matteo apart is his remarkable motivation. He consistently strives to reach his fullest potential, going above and beyond what is expected of him. Matteo is the type of human who will use his lunch and win periods to complete his work, ensuring that he not only meets deadlines, but also produces high-quality results. His drive to improve and push himself is an inspiration to everyone around him. In addition to his academic achievements, Matteo is also an avid soccer player, both in and out of school. He exemplifies dedication and teamwork on the field, and his leadership and sportsmanship are admirable. This year, Matteo also joined the wrestling team, further proving his willingness to challenge himself and take on new opportunities for growth. Matteo's ability to balance his academic responsibilities, athletic commitments, and his care for others make him a truly exceptional individual. His kindness, respect for others, and relentless pursuit of excellence make him a perfect embodiment of the Brighton believes values. We are confident that Matteo will continue to uphold these traits as he progresses through his academic journey and beyond. Congratulations, Matteo." Julie Whipple, nominated by Peyton D'Angelo. And Dr. Edmonds, if you could come up again also. Julie Whipple, 12 Corners Middle School teacher, is nominated by Peyton D'Angelo. She wrote, "Ms. Whipple has demonstrated the traits of Brighton believes by supporting her students in the classroom, inside the classroom, and outside the classroom. Ms. Whipple's kindness extends outside TCMS by showing support and praise to students, by sending letters home to congratulate and celebrate student successes in school. Ms. Whipple is a kind, smart, and loving teacher. She helps others when they need help and makes sure every student understands what she is teaching, always willing to go above and beyond for students to feel successful. Science is my favorite subject because of Mrs. Whipple. Ms. Whipple is the most extraordinary teacher to have and works hard every day." Congratulations. Nadine Dykes. Nominated by parent Ann D'Angelo. If you could come on up also, Ann, if Ann is here. Okay. I would also like Lou Alimo to come on up, please, who works in... Nadine is in her area, his area. Nadine Dykes, the BHS Print Production Supervisor, was nominated by parent Ann D'Angelo. She said, "I am proud to nominate Nadine Dykes for a Brighton Believers Award in recognition of her outstanding contributions to our school community. Nadine embodies the values of responsibility, respect, kindness, in everything that she does. Her work as the BCSD Print Production Supervisor and specifically in the BHS Print Shop is consistently responsive, accurate, and timely, no matter how last-minute or complex the request. She approaches every task with a calm, can-do attitude that reflects her deep commitment to supporting both staff, parents, PTSA and boosters, and students. Nadine is also incredibly thoughtful and creative, often going above and beyond to make printed or embroidered materials more engaging and effective. Her eye for detail and pride in her work elevate everything she produces. Beyond her technical skills, Nadine brings warmth and positivity to her interactions. She listens carefully, communicates clearly, and always finds a way to say yes. Her reliability and dedication make her an essential and deeply valued member of our school community. For all these reasons, Nadine truly exemplifies the spirit of Brighton believes. And by the way, in the hallway, as you walk around this building, the pictures on the wall, that's Nadine's work, dance photography and Nadine's work. So, thank you very much for... We also have a couple of other recognitions tonight under the category of heroes and headlines. I would just like to point out some great accomplishments of other members of our community in a little bit of a different way. It's my absolute pleasure to congratulate Steve Lee on being named the ESL Coach of the Year by the Rochester Press Radio Club's Celebration of Champions. What an extraordinary and well-deserved honor for Steve. If you know Steve, though, you know the recognition is about far more than wins for him and records. It's about the kind of program he's built and the kind of person that he is. He's a phenomenal teacher at 12 Corners Middle School and the head coach of our varsity football team. And he's the same person in every one of those places. Steady, kind, driven, fully invested in the growth of his students and athletes. He's really created a program that isn't just successful on the field. It's inclusive, welcoming, and grounded in community. He's built something special that really brings students, families, and our entire school together in a way that really, I think, reflects the best of who we are. We're incredibly proud of you, Steve, and thank you for the impact that you make every single day. Round of applause, please, for Steve. I'd also like to take a moment to celebrate someone who's made an indelible mark on our school community through all of her work and dedication to students, love of arts, and tireless support of all students, and that is Sarah Stabel. She was honored with a PTSA Life Membership Award, and I can't think of a more fitting recognition. She is an exceptional teacher, an extraordinary person, who's helped shape not only the lives of her students, but the entire culture of the arts program, particularly in the vocal area. Through every concert, rehearsal, performance, production, she brings a great energy, deep belief in the potential of every student, makes space for every student to be seen, heard, or valued, whether they take center stage or behind the scenes or singing from the risers. And her support does not only stop with their own students, extends to every program, production, and young person that she has the chance to work with. So, thank you very much to Sarah for creativity, warmth, advocacy, and unwavering commitment to creating something beautiful with the voices of our children. Now, we can do that. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Appreciate it.
We had a chance to see Sarah bring a number of different groups to a recent Brighton Rotary Dinner, and they were exceptional. So, appreciate everybody recognized tonight. Speaking of everybody recognized tonight, we will be going through next a budget presentation and a budget hearing. While this is very important to this entire community, it might be more important for members of the current audience to attend to homework or getting home in time. So, we will take a moment to allow people to be able to do that.
Come on, this is so good. The jokes are amazing. The information is wonderful.
I can confirm for you that the jokes are not amazing.
But you can livestream it when you go home.
They're at least predictable.
Yes. We'll get started. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Just some awesome recognition and helps us remember why we do all the things we do. Having said that, we do have an approved state budget, and while we will ask for some comments after this with regards to that state budget. This is a budget hearing tonight. We have a budget vote coming up on May 20th, so we will ask Dr. McGowan to do a budget presentation in the hearing for the proposed 2025-2026 school budget.
Thank you. This is... We've had any number of presentations. Materials are posted online, of course, on the Budget tab. So, this presentation is really entirely intended to be a very brief, I would say essentially a statutory overview with the information that has to be presented as part of the hearing. And then, of course, we welcome it to public comment. We do have a section for public comment normally tonight, but also, as this is a hearing, if anybody is here specifically to discuss the budget, we're happy to answer those questions. But it is slightly different than what has been presented before, not the information necessarily, but it is not as much of a narrative as much as it is simply the facts that we have to present relative to the budget without as much of the explanation that people can find online as well. There's a revenue summary, appropriation by function, appropriation by object, budget detail by function, and a summary of staffing to present to you. In addition, we will mention the property tax report card, the school report card, assessor's report, and administrative compensation information. But that is all available at bcst.org/budget for people to review in more detail, of course, as well. Important to point out that the three areas or the three kind of sentiments we wanted to get across to people all along was that this budget evolved in a way that we feel is responsible, respectful, and responsive. Responsible in terms of taking care of the needs of our students and protecting the financial fiduciary interests of our taxpayers, taking care of that resource, respectful of the feedback received during the process, and responsive to the needs of kids and our obligation to support them. The priorities that we set out in the beginning to make sure that we were following and adhering to was making sure that we're minimizing the tax impact to our residents and considering current financial conditions, right, thinking about what people are working through right now in their lives. We want to make sure we're also optimizing the current resources we have to preserve program, look at future options for fiscal sustainability, making sure that any decision we make now, we understand what impact that has for the long term, balance our immediate needs with that long-term financial health, and engage our stakeholders to make informed budget decisions as well. So, the budget, the total budget, proposed budget, and this is right from the newsletter that has gone home to people, right, that they can certainly review. We looked first at the 24-25 adopted budget, right, of $104.8 million. The proposed 25-26 is $110,572,957. The change then is an increase of $5,716,628. That's a 5.45% increase. We're seeing a change in federal and state sources of revenue of 14%, 14.7%. Really important to point out the next line, though. The unrestricted foundation aid in the final adopted budget is $760,253, an increase of 3.9%. Our local sources, other than the tax levy, 12.7%. And the amount of fund balance being used to reduce the levies is up 20%. That's $750,000. A real key number for people to hone in on, though, because that $750,000 essentially represents revenue from the tax levy and the amount of about a 1.5% increase. If you fit these puzzle pieces together and use kind of a general rounding that most of us would, our tax increase, our levy increase is at the cap number of 2%. That is 1.5% in additional revenue used in the tax levy kind of parameter. Put those two together, and you have just about the CPI number of 3.7 that had to be used in these formulations. In other words, we're plugging the hole created by the gap between the levy and inflation with our savings account, right? So, there is a gap between what the levy would allow and what CPI is. We're pulling that out of savings to plug that gap. That's something for the community to be thinking about because, long term, we will need to consider, how do we get closer to the rate of inflation? Because the reality is, we're paying that rate of inflation for the things we buy, the services we provide. That is the cost that we're currently not passing along to consumers in totality. So, we need to be considerate of that. The non-property tax revenues overall are 10, just over 10%, and the real property tax levy, as we mentioned, is at the cap number of 2.03%. In terms of where is that money in the budget, we're looking at an increase in the salary line. So, that's overall, that's not an increase to individual salaries. That spending on salaries is up just 1.74%. That's a pretty significant change from the preliminary budget that we first presented to you. Employee benefits are at 8.71%. Again, also, a pretty significant change from what we presented to you. We've had to make some changes in that area. Remember, the health insurance cost going into next year was a $2 million increase alone in our preliminary budget. So, we've been able to make some adjustments there. BOCIs is up 2.75%, Supply Services, 4.83%, and Debt and Transfers, we begin paying on capital projects. Again, that there is a revenue source also, corresponding revenue source in terms of state aid, building aid, is up 24.73%. This just really gives you a sense in the three-part budget. The three-part budget is the administrative budget, the capital budget, and the program budget. Our budget gets divided into those three buckets based on the way the State of New York views our budgets. And really, it's important to take a look at where are we spending that money. We've mentioned the improvement in terms of our spending on capital, taking care of that resource. That's gone up over time. It's up one more percent next year. We should be doing that. The administrative budget has stayed relatively flat, although that 1% has essentially come from that portion of the budget. But that overall, where are we seeing the continued work? I'm sorry, the 1% is coming out of the program budget. We are still spending 76% of all of the money on program. In other words, more than 3/4 of our spending is on the program itself, right? Not on the other pieces, not on the running of the operation, but on the program itself, on the people that are providing services to kids. And that is where we want to be. That's what we want to see relative to where we should be devoting resources. The estimated impact on the tax bill is also important to point out. Lower right-hand corner. On a home value of $250,000, properties in Pittsburgh will go up $492, and in Brighton, $137. Why the difference? Well, the difference is because we are... Our properties are assessed by two different assessors, right? Town of Pittsburgh would take care of Pittsburgh properties, Town of Brighton, Brighton properties. And if you look all the way on the left-hand side, the percent, the equalization rate to full value, Brighton is 59%, so closer to the 100%. Pittsburgh is at 57%, so further from full market, fair market value, which means that there needs to be a way to equalize that, right? If our properties in Brighton are closer to full market value, fair market value, and Pittsburgh's aren't, they have to equalize that, which is why the dollar amount on that home will go up further in Pittsburgh to make that even overall. And finally, again, taking a look at the appropriation by object, right, the adopted budget, proposed budget, and the variance between the two years, we would again point out salaries and wages for 677 people in this year's budget are now for 658.74 people going into next year's budget. And that represents full-time equivalency defined as 32.5 hours or more per week. But again, look at that pie chart on the right, benefits, salary, wages, BOCIs, those costs, and those pieces together get to that plus 70%, 76% being spent on the people overall. And again, we lean into that. We don't shy away from that. That is program for our kids. In terms of other variations that I would point out, the summary of appropriation, we're down just a little bit in equipment, up over 5% in utilities, tuition, contracted services. That's probably... That utility amount is very much in line with what people are probably seeing at home. Supplies, materials, up 3%. I think that's a remarkably low number when you consider the increased cost of most materials and supplies people see at home. 2.75% is the BOCIs cost increase. That's largely programs also that we send students to. 26% principal and interest payments. Again, remember, corresponding revenue for that because that is aided as well, transferred to capital fund, capital reserve, and transfers to special aid fund, which are down nearly 5%. So, a total of 5.45%. This table really just illustrates where positions have been added, taken away, and the difference in that total number of people that we mentioned to you. We are down 1.5 positions in the teacher area. That's small parts of positions overall, some addition of positions in areas where we had to... You can see in the gray bar in the middle where those additions and subtractions have been made, some additions for mandated services as well. Jumping down to paraprofessionals, down 10.7 positions. School nurses going up 0.62, and custodian maintenance going down half a person. The total is, then, we are 12.08 positions less going into next year. That has a real impact on human beings. That has an impact on service, but it is a far smaller impact than we would have expected at the beginning of this process. So, we've been able to do as much as possible to continue to maintain the people who are providing service. I do not want to diminish the fact that that has a real impact on the people whose parts of their positions have changed. We are, though, able to do a significant number of these changes through attrition as well, which has been helpful. Class size is always a question in our community. If you take a look at each grade level, kindergarten is just down 0.1%. Grade one class size will go up from 19.7 to 20.8. Grade two will go up slightly as well, 0.6. Grade three will stay the same grade. Four is going up 0.4, and grade five, just 1/10th of a percent. But if you take a look at those cohorts, so in other words, fourth grader is moving to fifth grade, or kindergarten is going to first grade, we feel pretty confident around those class sizes. We would always like them to be smaller. We know that's a priority in the community. The part, the table column on the right-hand side shows you what the difference would be if we added a teacher or took a teacher away. So, we really did our very best to keep those class sizes small. Again, taking a look at all of those adjustments in the staffing allocations, we can see where those positions are and where those adjustments have been made. But 3.1 positions overall in the teacher area have been reduced as well.
That's a pretty big bump in third grade. Are we confident that we'll have that many? I mean, I know that's typically a year where we see an increase. That's a full, that's a full section.
I have long thought that the path to great riches would be this prediction being DraftKings betting parlay with Lou Alimo's advice. So, yes, we are confident. No, it's a good question. But what's interesting is, because we go into these often, and the principals can attest to, there's a healthy skepticism in the room, and Lou is always very proud to spike the football, so to speak, on those assumptions. They become, with time, also, the benefit of time. That algorithm gets more and more accurate, and I think it's fair to say.
We've had a lot of volatility at that, so we are being conservative in this. So, if that's overstated a little bit, I would understand that.
But it ensures that we have space. Should we even get 20 new kids, that's still a full section.
Correct. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
But also, what happens is, and we've seen a lot more of this, Ms. Coggins can attest to this, a lot more transients and move-in during the year. And so, giving ourselves some space for that has been...
I was talking to Dr. Hall about that, I think just last night, or a couple nights ago, about bump in students mid-year.
Yeah. It seems to be a growing trend, for sure. In terms of property tax report card, again, this is the state's provided algorithm and formula to get to this place. The key number is in the middle for us, which is 2.03% as the eventual number that we had to land on for the property tax cap number. The CPI that had to be used in this calculation was 2.95%, right? So, significantly different. In other words, inflation is up almost a percent higher than what we are charging back then to the consumers of the product. On the right-hand side are what we are estimating right now in terms of our balances in each of the reserves. And this is listed to make sure that we're providing people this information. Again, post it online. I won't rattle off each of the dollar amounts to you, but you can see where we are utilizing them, but also making sure that we have healthy reserves for the long term also. The points of pride is really what I look at as the prospectus, right? Like, this is the document that says to people, "This is what you're getting for your investment." And the key numbers, of course, become the graduation rate and a tremendous amount of success relative to all students. Our rate in 2013 was 89, 2024, 95%. Our rate in 2013 was 89, 2024, 95%. We expect to be at the same place or slightly higher this year. But the key is actually the number for closing the gap with all children and ensuring that that's success is for every student. True excellence is really whether or not is accessible for all kids in our system. On the left-hand side, you can see also the number of kids taking AP courses. And that 76% of our kids in 2024 graduated having taken at least one class. That is really amazing. We know that taking an AP class spells greater chance of success in college coursework. Uh, whether that's in a two or four-year school, there's a tremendous amount of data that shows that rigor of that, the experience of that prepares people very well for that challenge later on. Athletic opportunities, arts opportunities, and a wide variety of recognition, uh, for that work, whether it's being a best music community, a great place to work, a top STEM high school. There's a lot to be very proud of that people are investing here in this community in, and the opportunities that their kids are being afforded because of that. The total budget proposal then is 110 million dollars, 572,957. That's an increase of 5.72 million dollars or 5.45%. The tax cap number 2.03% is awfully important to keep that in mind. We're at the cap. We believe that that adequately supports at this point these goals and objectives of minimizing the tax impact, ensuring that we have the right resources available and the right staff available to support the needs of students, that it maintains our fiscal stability and supports our students and families with continued investment in programs and opportunities. Overall, this supports the four priority areas of our blueprint as well. We don't do this haphazardly. This work happens by planning it carefully, being intentional in that, following through on that, measuring that, and then reinvesting. And this plan is developed as a numerical expression of our values, a numerical expression of what we support. And we're continuing to support mental health and wellness, the family and student experience, academic excellence, and operations at a very, very high level. Voting information has been sent out to our community. It's May 20th, of course, next Tuesday, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Uh, all day, in other words, here. There will be food trucks as well. We're happy to answer any questions that people have. All of the information, again, has been distributed in our community. Any questions I can answer for you?
Just to add one note is that if you come vote next Tuesday, you'll get to use the brand-new Monroe County voting machines, which are near state. And they're phenomenal in terms of just sort of being much easier to use, easier to read for all people, all kinds of things. So anyway.
So if for no other reason, come and try out the new voting machine.
I'm an elections inspector. I got to try them out. They're really cool. So.
I know it's silly and dorky, but they're really, really neat.
Monroe County School Board Association did an entire presentation. I wasn't able to attend, but Larry did.
It's really cool.
Yeah. On rolling out what the new initiative will be like and how they'll be implemented. And the feedback from that was that it was a, a, not only a thorough presentation, but, um, made people feel a lot better about that change.
Significant, it's a significant improvement. So, yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to make note that this is not possible without Lou's financial stewardship, so thank you for that. And a lot of, uh, challenge in the budget process from the leaders in this room that make this happen as well and help us get to this point. So, uh, thanks to all of them for their leadership in this also.
Just a couple of real quick comments. We joke about this, but in truth, we talk about budgets virtually every single meeting, um, throughout the school year. That's how much time is spent on this. As a board of ed, we're responsible, um, to create a budget or help create a budget, um, that we think is representative of the community, but we're also representing the community. And so greatly happy with the work of Lou and his entire team. The finance committee, which is myself and Dr. Lee and Karen, I'm sorry, the finance, the audit committee, I apologize, that goes through to look at how we're spending money and things we're doing there, uh, creates high confidence for us in terms of being steward for taxpayers' money. So appreciate all the work that's going into it and, um, hope we get a great turnout next Tuesday. Um, this is a budget to be proud of. So, uh, greatly appreciate the presentation. Any other questions or comments from the board? I think we move to approve the budget here for vote, right? Motion to approve the budget as presented by Dr. McGowan.
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor, seconded by Karen. All those in favor? Aye. We are approved. Um, in every public meeting, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to speak, have feedback or questions for the school board or the superintendent? See none, we'll go on and do an approval of the agenda. I do have an amendment for the agenda next meeting, which is May 27th. Neither myself nor our board vice president, Dr. Christina Lee, is available. So we will be, as new agenda item 10, putting forward a motion to have Dr. Sue Gasparino act as president for that meeting. And we're not doing that because she's not here. She's aware that we're doing that, just so we're clear. So you will see. Yeah, right. So, uh, that will come up in the amended agenda as new item number 10.
She also has to pick him and tell him off for the family burden, whatever they're charging.
Exactly. So with the addition as described of, uh, item 10, motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor? Next up, we have the approval of the minutes from the April 29th, uh, education meeting. You all have had a chance to review those minutes. Any questions, edits, or comments from those minutes? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor? We now will go for the reports, uh, the financial reports require separate approval. Under, uh, item A, small a, B, and C, we have both, uh, or rather, the budget status report for the period ending March 31st. The treasurer's report for the period ending March 31st, and the financial report of student activities at BHS and TCMS for the period ending, uh, March 31st. You all have had a chance to review those reports. Are there any questions? Motion to, um, approve those reports as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, Dagny Johnson, our student rep, had a scheduling conflict tonight, so she has asked Jacob Restrepo, who is the current student council treasurer and the future student council president, congratulations on that. To, uh, do the presentation tonight. Jacob, it's a great honor to meet you and we're anxious to hear from you.
All right. So for academics, the fourth and final quarter began April 9th. Uh, students prepared for their finals and Regents exams. And AP exams started last Monday and will continue through this Friday. Also, the SAT was administered May 3rd. For sports, Brighton softball and golf had their senior nights tonight. Uh, Brighton Boys Lacrosse is hosting a teacher and fan appreciation night this Wednesday. Uh, Boys Individual Tennis Sectionals were this weekend. Uh, Brighton Football is hosting a youth camp July 28th through the 31st. And Brighton Girls Basketball is holding a youth camp August 3rd through the 6th. For clubs, Brighton Rowing Club participated in St. Catherine's Rowing Club Early Bird Regatta on April 27th, and had a very successful weekend, taking multiple top-three finishes. The Brighton High School Chess Team competed in the Rochester League Championships on Saturday, May 3rd. The team won its division for the fourth year in a row. Uh, Brighton's Red Cross Club held their annual blood drive last Saturday. The District Day of Dance was held May 10th. And key club advisor, Ms. Doyle, won Faculty Advisor of the Year at their annual conference. For exec, we've started scheduling our spring festival, which will be on May 23rd, with a lot of activities, tournaments, and club demonstrations, including a talent show by faculty and students. Uh, for other information, students from the Brighton High School Music Program performed, uh, at a charity event hosted by Bright, by the Brighton Rotary at the Winter Garden at Frickstone on April 11th. The Class of 2028 had a fundraiser at Five Guys on April 29th. Two students competed and won at the Skills USA New York State Competition in, uh, on April 25th. Prom tickets have been sold by the Junior Class Council members for the last couple of weeks. Senior Bash Tickets are available until May 15th. Uh, Brighton's holding its annual Clean Sweep on May 17th, picking up around, around town. And Brighton Visual Performing Arts presented the Language Archive on May 2nd and 3rd.
So really nothing going on at all.
Pretty boring.
It was an excellent job. Obviously, a hugely busy time of year for all of you, particularly in the high schools. So thank you for taking the time to visit with us tonight. Congratulations on both your current office and your new office next year.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have the Board of Education reports. Uh, first, we'll start with the Monroe County School Board Association, Association reports. Um, to Karen's point, I'll quickly talk about district ops, a very, uh, it was our last meeting of the year on April 23rd, and it was a very timely presentation, which was, uh, capital projects in challenging times, planning and protection strategies from the pros.
Oh, I went to that too.
Yes.
Yeah. I was on it.
Yes. Um, and we had, uh, campus construction, a number of people from campus construction who we work with on a number of our projects. Talk about everything from locking prices in potential tariff times to some of the situations with planning projects around electric buses and things like that. We have a number of different projects which are nearing completion, in planning phase or in construction phase, uh, and have been doing a ton of work on this. Thought it was a good presentation, um, worked with a couple of people who did the presentations. They also had somebody there from Bernie Downey, which is the finance, a separate finance organization that sort of looks at costing and pricing and things like that. So overall, good presentation, as I noted, last one for the year. We sort of had a C in September. Uh, our thanks to Tom, uh, Tom Nespeck and Stephanie Templeton, who were the co-chairs for district operations this year. Thank you. Want to add a district operation?
It was, it was an excellent presentation, but one of the things that made me very pleased was that I, having been in this process since 2017, I, hearing them do the overview made me feel just even more confident of how we go through this process and the steps we take and how Lou guides us through it. And the work you've done, Larry, I felt very good about the things that we've been doing because it just echoed, you know, the best practices that were being talked about.
I'll also, as I always do, and I'll say this again, just, uh, super grateful and thankful for our buildings folks who are a huge piece of that whole process and have such great knowledge of our buildings, uh, really great there. Information exchange.
Yep. So, um, I actually did not attend that meeting, but Esther Winter did, and she's not able to be here because she's with her senior daughter at her.
Can you recite?
Yeah, recital. So she sent me the Cliff Notes. Um, it, this was also the last information exchange for the school year, and it was regarding the requirements of having a non-voting student rep on the board, really looking at, um, procedures and protocol as well as requirements that we are supposed to be following with that representation.
So, um, two quick comments. Jacob had to go and Dagny wasn't able to be here. We've been doing this for a while, so we don't maybe think about it the same way as people who are looking at it now. But we benefit from having a student available to, to sit on ours. Has had a lot of training, uh, a lot of discussion about that from what I was told. Also, there'll be a training offered in July through Monroe County School Board Association, um, that some districts have, um, have requested. But, uh, grateful for our students, as I know all of you are, because it adds something to, to what we do. So, thank you for that, Carrie Lynn. Legislative.
We're still in it. Um, our last meeting was, I reported on our last meeting, at our last meeting, uh, we met with the Regents. And it was a, it was actually surprising. The Regents asked if they could come back because they felt like the conversation needed to continue. So we will have an extra meeting on June, I think it's June 4th, with Regent Hale and with Regent Norwood, um, to continue discussing disturbances at the federal level. Uh, but in addition, we had an extra meeting in May. Legislative Committee reserves the right to have an extra meeting, let's say the budget hasn't passed yet. Um, and we met a day early. We met on Wednesday last week, and the budget really got set in motion on Thursday. But, um, in kind of a banner year, we'll be able to retire a couple of our position papers because they actually came true. Things that I didn't necessarily anticipate. So this is kind of esoteric. Um, the BOCES ADEVABLE Salary Cap is something that Monroe County School Boards has been lobbying for, for a very long time. Um, that it's, it will help attract new teachers and keep them because we'll be able to offer higher salaries. Um, that salary cap has been in place since 1992, I think, and it's very much out of date. Um, so that one's kind of hard to wrap your mind around, but what it means is that we should be able to continue offering quality services for students in that EMCC program. Do you want to add anything on that?
Right, and I think it's important to point out, so the, the reimbursement for that salary was set as a percentage of the salary from a very long time ago. It had never been adjusted. So in other words, we wouldn't get reimbursed for, uh, the full amount of the cost of that salary really in those programs.
And that cap is doubling over the next three years.
Yes, in which it absolutely should be. And then it has ramifications for some of the other BOCES reimbursements as well.
We've been asking for that since I, I started in this business 10 years ago. Um, the other, um, ask that we had on the books was, um, extending the waiver of earnings limitations for certain retired public employees. And again, this helps districts fill some spots that are tricky, that might not have a lot of, might not have a big applicant pool. But then, the surprise, um, was about zero emissions buses. Because we have not heard a word really from the governor in this budget, and this, this was, this was a big deal. Um, when she announced it, what, two years ago? Um, the enacted budget extends, allows the commissioner to grant district-by-district waivers if you cannot meet the 2027 requirement. This doesn't really reflect what we've asked for, but I feel like it's, uh, an acknowledgement, finally, that this is going to be difficult for many districts to do in the timeline that's been mandated for us. So I, I feel like that is a good step. And then, of course, something we've talked about at this table was universal meals. I still have big concerns about what's going to happen at the federal level that may prevent New York from following through on this promise, but I believe the governor said that no matter what, we're going there. So that's good news.
I think so.
It's good news. I mean, I think that would be great for this district. We know that that, we know families really leaned on that program during the pandemic, and I expect they will once that's enacted. Um, that's the news on legislative.
Um, also note that Karen is obviously a co-chair for that, uh, that, uh, committee, so thank you very much for taking on that leadership role. Anything either of you want to say quickly? We voted on the budget, about the state budget being passed. Anything you want to add to that before we leave legislative?
No, I mean, I think that Karen and her committee and Karen's leadership has been really huge on this, and, and the work that's been done to retire those papers, you know. I don't think we can undersell enough the, the way that Karen's contributed to that herself individually. And then Monroe County School Board's legislative group has pursued that. I think there are other items, and a great concern for us is the lack of growth in foundation aid over time relative to inflation. So I think that's something we need to keep an eye on.
Well, this is something, these are two words the legislative committee really, um, hates to hear me say, but that's, that's the tax cap.
Right.
That's by design.
Right.
And unless... The foundation aid formula currently does not reflect inflation properly.
Right.
So the governor has a choice. It can be reflected in foundation aid. Or we can make changes to the tax cap that we've been asking for since its inception. Uh, namely, that that multiplying factor, instead of being 2% or the CPI whichever is lower, being 2% of the CPI whichever is higher, which would accurately reflect the conditions under which we're operating.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so that is a concern. We are working on, uh, the cell, Bell the Bell cellphone ban that was featured in the governor's, uh, budget as well. Uh, we currently really already have that at the middle school level, essentially K-5, which it hasn't been an issue for us. But it's all internet-enabled electronic devices, so, uh, watches, other devices, which we've been able to manage internally, fine. Uh, we are going to have to look at, you know, how does that work at the high school level? Also, uh, Dr. Hall and Dr. Edmonds will be co-chairing a committee that will look at a draft policy that I will eventually propose to you prior to the deadline of Au- August 1st. We'll have two reads. Uh, we'll be able to do that by the end of this year. So you'll have time likely at the June 10th meeting and then the July 2nd reorg meeting to do both of those reads and adopt that by August 1st, which is required by law. Other requirements, uh, include having that available for, uh, staff, students, and parents to provide input on, which they will, uh, through this committee process, and we'll outline more details when we get closer to that.
Thank you both. From the BOCES, uh, grateful as always for our former board president, Mark Kokonovich, who's our representative of the BOCES board. I'll do his big headline news first, which is, uh, the current BOCES superintendent, uh, guy with a rollover name with Dan White, is retiring. Our congrats to him and, and also our gratitude for all he's done. But, uh, the Monroe One Board of Education has selected Dr. Kathy Halber as their next superintendent. She was formally appointed at their May 8th meeting and will assume her new role on July 1st, following Dan's retirement. We congratulate Dr. Halber and look forward to working with her as well. It might be that this fall is the time when we go back over there and take a walk run, as we do every couple of years.
So we can meet her?
Yes, absolutely. Um, a number of different budgets, their administrative capital program budgets were approved, as well as their capital project phase two is approved. Also grateful to Mark. He's sent along, and I'll just hit a couple of stats. Um, the services that we, Brighton, are taking on, of the available 48 different services, Brighton uses 31 of them. Um, we obviously use them for a lot of our technology services. And as generated by support tickets, Brighton earned 684 support tickets. Brighton earned 684 support tickets. There were a number of other things. We use these services greatly, we benefit, and our kids benefit from these services, and we are grateful for Mark's work here. Here's the other one I really liked, I'm sorry, I'm going to give one more, which is 48 college credits via dual enrollment with MCC or GCC were given to Brighton students, which is really cool. So, great results for our kids, our students attending over there. Brighton students are in 15 of the 18 available programs offered by EMCC, so the overwhelming majority of them. So, great stats for Mark. I hope we can make these somehow available on our website so people can see that and continue to appreciate Mark's work. Other board member reports. Carrie Lynn, I'll start with you, we'll work down the table this way. Anything else to report?
No other thing to report today.
Okay. Eleanor?
I attended the District Safety Committee last week with Larry. I'd leave a little bit early so he can tack on what I missed, but we did discuss the change of speed limits for the TCMs in Brighton High School parking lot, which, thank you, Lou, this, or team in general, but the signs are already up, and so now we are at five miles per hour we're going through, to make sure we do not hit our small children that are going in and out of buses and cars and everything else, so. And then we also discussed a bunch of other, sort of just reflecting on emergency responses and kind of really trying to make sure to communicate all of this really well. And so I know there's going to be further discussions, as there always are with every situation. Davis, anything else?
No, just towards the end, we did discuss two things. One, obviously, the farmers market has begun again in the Brighton High School parking lot, which is on Sunday, safety requested and required there. Also, there's a lot of construction upcoming, both on Wynton Road, as we change our entrance in the next couple of years, not imminently, and then as work begins on the fields, and that's more likely going to be 2026, which will create some safety hazards, so we'll see, hear, see and hear a lot more about that. But that construction season for the schools, all four of them, is July and August, and it's great, it goes at great pace and intensity there. So we'll talk more about some of that stuff. Continue to appreciate the work of Teresa Mosier and the great work she's doing as sort of our head of security, and sort of finding ways to have, make sure our students are safe, so.
And then, last thing, is that Karen Hatch and Christina Lee were both there, but as mentioned by Dr. McGowan at the beginning of the meeting, Sarah Stavel was awarded the PTSA Lifetime Membership Award. Leslie Seltzer did a great job planning it. I had to step in as the past, 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 past president as the emcee for the evening, but it was a lovely event that they put on, and really great audience attendance by her colleagues and friends, and even some of her current students were all there and just cheering her on, to say things. And her former teacher, yeah, the best of her piano teacher from when she was five, as well as her former band high school teacher were both in attendance to sort of, you know, congratulate her, and her family were there as well. And so it was really just a wonderful event overall. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. Karen?
I've talked enough, but I have a question about facilities, the facilities plan. Do we have anywhere on our website, I don't think we do, I'm looking at it right now, a timeline of what work is actually taking place at what time? I get tripped up with this question all the time, like, when are we making, doing the fields? And I, sometimes I say to folks, ask me how we're paying for it, and please ask Larry when we're starting that project. Like, I need a cheat sheet, like, what's happening when? I understand all the phases, but like, when are we breaking ground here, there?
So I'll ask Lou to comment in just a second. The work that has a defined timeframe, I'm not sure if that's available on the website, but there's a chunk of work that's pending ACD approval.
Right.
Or going through the Monroe County DOH, or, yeah, I said that right. So, some work, we know it's going to happen, we don't know when yet because not all the approvals are, but some is so.
Like a ballpark, but.
I think we could put a chart, just our, kind of our project timeline chart, you know, right now our.
It would be helpful for me personally, but I bet, like, I know folks have questions like.
I think that would be, because some people are aware of.
Right, like, when are we doing the fields, right?
Yep.
Those pieces.
And we review those timelines every meeting, so we can formalize something for that.
Thank you.
The specific question, that feels like 26, although we don't know why, given the weather.
Yes, okay. But it's just, like, I need a cheat sheet.
Great suggestion, so appreciate that. Dr. Lee?
The New York State School Board Association's DEI Committee met a couple of weeks ago, and we sort of just finished up a conversation about what our priorities will be for next year. We had some new members join, and actually Dr. Lorna Lewis, who has been on, is retiring, who's a longtime superintendent in New York State, Marlburn. Anyway, so we talked about our priorities, and, you know, as language around the work that we're doing is changing, there was a lot of conversation about how the New York State School Board Association wanted to move forward. And then I also attended the Teacher Policy Centers meeting last week, and to vote on, approve the grant for professional development for our teachers this summer. So that's always exciting to know what's available for all of our teachers, and, you know, being able to provide as much professional development as we can. And we did an interesting exercise on executive skill building ourselves, to sort of think about executive skill building in the classroom, so that's always fun for me. So, that's all.
Thank you. I'm all set. So we will go to Nicole, and the VTA report, please.
Great, awesome. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the things that are happening in our buildings. Council Rock was very busy this month. So I'll start with Mrs. Lyons. They were, her second grade classroom was studying erosion. They actually decided to meld some math with their science and came up with a budget of what they could spend, and how they could prevent the erosion from happening, but also stay within their budget, using lots of habits of mind. You can see them doing some of their experience. If you've kept track of the bald eagles in California, Mrs. Moulton's class did a deep dive into them, and they started observing them, studying them, and they created a life-sized eagle's nest that was hanging in the hallway. They did writing about, they wrote narratives about the storm where there was two feet dumped of snow on the eagle, and she protected the babies, and, or the chicks, and they did beautiful narratives. It was just an incredible display. Just got a few fun facts there, and you can see the students in the hallway building the eagle, and then, I think, and the narrative, and then if you look, there's the life-sized nest, it really, it was huge, and just tremendous. And then the kids right in front of it, very proud of their work. In Ms. Quail's first grade class, for Earth Day, students made Earth Day crayons, so she had them peel their used crayons, recycle the paper, and then she melted the crayons to make new ones. So some great photos of some first graders working collaboratively. And then Ms. Cook and Ms. Quail, so both first grade classes, did a mini chicken unit, and they went to the hab lab to create their own chicken coops. They worked in small groups to design and model, give them space to grow, and then also keep them safe from predators. So lots of amazing pictures, the bunny ears is my favorite. We'll go to, in Mrs. Moulton's class, so if you click on the ice cream cone, it will show you that. Mrs. Moulton's and all students made a digital book talking about their favorite kind of ice cream, and that was to get them ready for the ice cream social. In Ms. Jennings and Mrs. Burroughs' class, they did this amazing field trip, and if you click on the horse, it'll take you there, to Aqua Center, which is, uses therapeutic, equestrian, and horticultural programs. And they had the kids come out, spend time with hands-on experiences, learning how to care for a horse, gardening, and feeding fish, just such a wonderful field trip they were able to do. And then Mrs. Kennyworth's class published a very funny book, Don't Let the Pigeon Teach Kindergarten, as part of their Mo Willems study unit, other studies, so if you click on the bird, you can find that. The West Wing kindergarten classes celebrated the end of Eid, or, I'm sorry, the end of Ramadan with Eid, and they had a date, yummy dates tasting in their classroom. And then Extended Studies was also very busy in kindergarten. They did this amazing research piece where they went to the Habits of Mind Kingdom, they had to use their past knowledge and interact with a wizard, they helped the king and the wizard, and to thank them, they were able to get amulets, and so you can see some kindergartners wearing their amulets that they took home. In first grade ESS, they were, within the classrooms, they were reading different versions of fairy tales. So she had them look at examples of different items, and then they looked at a piece of art by Diego Velazquez, and then looked at Picasso's version of that, and then created their own using loose parts. And if you look on the, if you click on the easel, that was shared with families, the book was shared with families. Second grade, they were preparing for their geometry unit and thinking like architects, and they studied a quote first by Frank Lloyd Wright, that he learned the primary forms and figures, and that was his secret to understanding architecture. So they used toothpicks and marshmallows, they were given a different marshmallow to taste, if they wanted one, they didn't use the ones they built with. And then they identified 2D and 3D shapes within what they built. In Mrs. Hodgson's class, they were learning about different habitats, so they did research and then created a report and connected it to their first grade field trip, which was to the zoo. So those are just tremendous. And then they were studying about their own backyards, and they created their own habitats, planted grass, and added animals, and they loved to cut the grass. So that's, you can just see the joy on those faces, it's beautiful. Mrs. O'Gorman also kindergarten, studied Mo Willems, and they did so many things around Mo Willems. They painted pigeons, they created monsters, they made sun catchers, colored knuckle bunnies, wrote a book, had a publishing party, and then you can see they did a March Madness book tournament where they read books and then voted on their favorite, Mo Willems. For the author visit, he didn't get a chance to see these in the halls of Council Rock, they're amazing. For the author visit, the art teacher and librarian worked together, and in the library, they researched famous people, and then they created images in art, and they went through how to do proportion, and it's all hanging up by class, it's really quite incredible. And, in gym, they are working on cardio drumming, and they did all sorts of songs, hamster dance, chicken dance, happy, uptown funk, all with cardio drumming, working on those habits of mind. They also had traffic safety specialists from Monroe County Public Safety and the Brighton Fire Department come to teach about bike and pedestrian safety, and there was a lot of great use of that last week for our Bike and Walk to School Week, and you can see some of their activities that they did. And then we're at FRES, so Council Rock is very busy. There have been art shows for each grade level at Front Road. The third and fourth grade have already occurred, but fifth grade will be on May 15th. The PE department actually invited family members to come to join their child's class and see how PE has changed since they were in school, and they were really just trying to encourage learning through play. In, at, in Ms. Mous's class, they did a hands-on steam challenge in ELA, this was pretty amazing, that Ms. Fallon also helped with, about breaking barriers. So they researched a disabled sculptor, and then tried to recreate their own, but they had different, different things, different limitations that they had to overcome. So they might have had an oven mitt, or having to use tongs, or keeping one hand behind their back, and then just worked to problem solve and build together. This was the fifth grade ESS students, they studied climate change, and they became teachers and went to the third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms to present their research. And what was, the quote that was so great was, not only did they learn themselves, but they also became better presenters, and you can see different presentations in many different classrooms. At the middle school, Mrs. Lou's sixth grade ELA, they had, they capped off a unit on determination with minute to win it. Not sure what the cotton ball one was, but it looks like fun. They also went outside to illustrate their color films in the, probably the first day of sunshine we got. In Senor Dennison's seventh grade classes, they did a papel picado project, where they designed their own templates, cut them themselves, they used some of their own time, their wind time, and then they voted on them, and the top ones were able to get a treat, and then they hung them on, within the classroom, and they're really amazing. And then at VHS, the Latino Student Union had guest speakers from SUNY Geneseo come to present. Brighton physics students went to the RIT High School Physics Olympiad and took first and second place out of 18 teams from across New York State. It's their second straight year that Brighton students took top spots. And, this is, since 2016, the Lauren Larry Davis Jr. Camper Scholarship Fund has sponsored Brighton students. About 70 students have been sent to camp, and this year they have 10 Brighton students that are coming, and Mrs. Lebel just asked to consider attending a fundraiser to support that. And then last, the Mr. Wilson wanted to thank some of the speakers who have come to talk to the seniors in the Law and Government Large Group, including Dr. McGowan, our Brighton Police Chief, and then Nate Salzman, who's a Brighton graduate and also a councilman. I think that's the last page? Yes. So, thank you.
He'll even go talk to the high school kids about the budget, that's how many people who'll go talk.
Yeah. This is what was.
262 or others, whatever it takes.
And as you know, this is just a slice of what happens, these are just the people who send me things. It's such an amazing place.
And we say it every time, we appreciate the pictures as well, because as they say, a picture's worth a thousand words, and you've got some great photos in here. So thank you for taking the time to put that together, to the entire VTA. Dr. Castillo, for the PTA, PTSA, excuse me.
Good evening. Starting with Council Rock Primary School, yearbook sales wrapped up on April 20th. Families visited classrooms during kindergarten, first, and second grade open houses, and the PTSA celebrated our amazing bus drivers on April 22nd. I do have one small addition from the written report, the second grade crossover bingo event will take place at FRES on June 5th.
I'm going to put that in my calendar.
Looking at the French Road, they held a staff meeting on April 28th with snacks provided by the PTSA. The color run took place on May 6th and was a huge hit. Coming up, we're planning a staff appreciation launch on May 23rd and fifth grade celebration on June 23rd, which will include a photo booth, bounce houses, yard games, and the Kona Ice Truck to help students celebrate the end of the elementary school. At 12 Corners Middle School, the eighth grade spring dance was held on April 26th with a Hollywood theme. The sixth grade held their activity night on May 2nd. Students used the Nancy Beck Grant to purchase a cotton candy machine for the night. The event was a hit with the kids, and last week, the Student Appreciation Week celebrated the stars of TCMS. At the Brighton High School, they held a Give Back Day for their staff meeting and had a meeting with the principal in April. Looking at the Special Education Committee, they hosted a Parents Night on April 21st for families of students with 504s or IEPEs. The discussion ran for over two hours, and due to strong interest, a follow-up meeting is scheduled for May 12th. The DEI Committee is running a disability awareness program in partnership with TCMS. Butterfly Reader is also visiting Council Rock and TCMS to read inclusive books, reaching over 100 students at CRPS and 30 at TCMS. In Spiritware News, we're planning an online sale and are looking for student designers, especially anyone building a portfolio, to help create new designs. Students commit designs by emailing bcsdptsapres@brightonschoolcentralisticptsa pres@gmail.com, and we will pass them along to the committee. On the fundraising front, we held a silent auction at the Sheffield on April 28th, it was a lot of fun. School supply lists are finalized, and promotions will be going out soon. Senior lawn signs are coming up next. We're also planning the 2025-26 school year with an annual 5K run set for September 28th. The Nominating Committee finalized elections, Jamie Smith is our new secretary, and Janita Anthony was unanimously approved as the president-elect. Congratulations to both. Finally, this year's Festival Ideas saw over 600 students participate. The PTSA would like to give a big thank you to Jim Kane, who's managed registration for over 35 years. The PTSA is incredibly grateful for his dedication. This event continues to be a huge favorite year after year. This event continues to be a huge favorite year after year, I know, because my daughter won't stop talking about it.
Accurate, yep, that's a festival.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. McGowan?
There's a vote next week.
Is there?
Sunday at 9:00 PM and Qantas food trucks, so please come. I would like to just make a kind of special recognition. And although she's very carefully trying to point the camera right at me, Joy, can you take a step to the left or right, so everybody can see you? I know I'm going to mortify you, but Joy Ajumadu, outstanding senior. So she was our nominee for the Monroe County School Superintendent's Outstanding Senior Recognition. So let me say this about Joy, oh, don't disappear yet, I'm just going to. Had a wonderful, wonderful evening with Joy, her amazing mom and dad, and her brother. It was just such an enjoyable time, and really got to hear about her really wonderful story, her hard work, just who she is as a human. That smile is who she is, like, in her soul, it's amazing. And the way she's impacted our school environment, and will continue on. And I want to read a little bit of information that was compiled about Joy. She's the founder and president of the Brighton High School Music Collective, also in leadership for two community service focus clubs, Friends of Rachel and Harmonies for Healing. She's a member of the jazz band, and previously competed in Science Olympiad and Track and Field. Also serves as the safety captain for McQuade's First Robotics Team. This year, their team qualified for the 2025 First Robotics World Championship in Houston, Texas, where they were finalists in their division. And by graduation, Joy will be awarded both a New York State Seal of Tri-Literacy and Seal of Bi-Literacy next fall. She will be attending Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University to study aerospace engineering. She is amazing, and I said to her, there are a ballpark, 11,000 seniors, I think, in Monroe County. If you look at all the high schools. And there were 43 kids recognized, which puts her in the top half of 1% of all seniors in Monroe County. So. And that, Joy is a mic drop, so I am not.
All right, we have consent agenda and a rather lengthy one. We've got approval of personnel changes and recommendations from the Committee on Special Education and from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, a field trip approval, and numerous, and I do mean numerous fundraising activities, all sorts of opportunities to get your car cleaned and get something to eat. You can have a main course, or dessert, or in one particular case, a meat raffle. What's better than that? Unless you're a vegetarian, of course.
That is a nightmare.
I just read about this concept today, the meat raffle, this was new to me.
Oh, the first one for Brighton happened last year for softball, I think? No, two years ago for softball, anyway, but yeah. Fascinating, it is.
Those are the fundraising activities, and four gifts. We do have one gift, and it is our practice to read. That is a gift from the Pluta Family Foundation, Sharon and David DeGraff, in the amount of $5,000 to supplement and not replace the existing budget for the girls' softball team. So we are greatly appreciative of that gift. Are there any questions with regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn, all those in favor? Next, this is the item that we did add. A motion to appoint Dr. Susan Gasparina to officiate the May 27th, 2025 Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Before we adjourn, as always, our thanks to the All-Star Joy, our man in the back room there, Mike, and Dollar Bill over here behind the camera, so we're grateful for them. And the dates Dr. McGowan alluded to, which is a week from tonight, is the budget vote, no, tonight, a week from today, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Also tomorrow night is Candidates Night, we have three candidates running for two school board positions. That'll be at 7:00 o'clock. With that, for the good of the order, is there anything else? With that, I offer a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Karen, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.